Let's please take our seats. Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting. We will have the invocation by Pastor Dwight Hurt Senior from Breakthrough Worship Ministries in Marl, Georgia. Please stand with me and be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, in the name of Jesus, Lord, we come first of all just to say thank you. God, we thank you for your mercy and your grace. We thank you, God, for your loving kindness and your tender mercy. Father God, we thank you because you are the only true and living God. God, we thank you because according to your word, you said that you are able to do exceedingly, abundantly, above all that we can think or ask according to your, according to the power that worketh in us. And God, we just pray, God, that you would touch this commissioners' board and that, God, that you would empower them and give them wisdom and knowledge to change the communities of Clayton County. God, we pray, God, that you would touch the families, that you would change their lives, that you would bring them out of poverty, that you would stop the violence, God, that you would cause them, God, to come together as a community of love and understanding. Father God, in the name of Jesus, we just thank you right now. And we decree today, oh God, that the violence will stop. We decree today, oh God, that families will be healed. We decree today, oh God, that, God, you would cause economic improvement, God. We just thank you now, God, and we give you glory, honor, and praise. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hi there, how are you?
Good evening and welcome to the July 21st, 2015 Regular Business Meeting. The first order of business is the adoption of the agenda. Does any board members have any amendments to the agenda? Hearing none. Kristi?
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, we have a request to update Resolution Number 2015-189 to reflect accurate grant fund amounts, and I provided a copy to Ms. Davis for your review. This is for additional grant funds for the provision of kinship care services. And we are also requesting to add Resolution Number 2015-196 to tonight's agenda as an emergency item. This is a resolution authorizing the county to amend its contract with Construction Management Engineering Services Incorporated to extend the contract completion date and the cost for the project.
Okay, is there a motion to amend this into the agenda? Is there a second? Uh, second, probably move second, those in favor, aye. Aye. Opposed?
Approval of the July 7th, 2015 Regular Business Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the meeting minutes.
Uh, second, probably move, uh, second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous.
The board will now hear public comment. Mr. Chairman, we do have citizens that have signed up. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time limit to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record, speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and not make any disparaging remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Dr. Cecilia Owens.
As you come forward, if you would, please restate your name for the record and provide your county of residency.
I am Dr. Cecilia Owens. My county of residency is Clayton County, and I'm here tonight to present a written complaint to the Board of County Commissioners. It's addressed to Chairman Jeff Turner against the Tax Commissioner. It is all in writing, so I won't go through it. I know it is a personnel issue, but I wanted to formally present it as documentation and into the official records. I've also given you some supporting documentation that I sent to your emails, I believe on last week, and I wanted to give this to you in person tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Linda Ingram.
Chairman Turner and Commissioners, hi. My name is Linda Ingram, and I'm from Clayton County. I'm not going to complain about animal control tonight. It's moving forward, and I'm very happy about that. I want, I would just like for you to tell me about the new animal control. I haven't had an update lately. Could you fill us in on what's going on, everything you know about it?
Well, it's moving, it's moving forward, and what I will ask you to do is get with the COO, Dietrich Stanford, and he will give you some details and reference to it.
Okay, so if I need information from now on, I should go to him?
If you want to find out more particulars about the shelter itself, then please give him a call, and if you don't get those, get a response, then you contact me. We'll make sure we answer your questions.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Clark Russell.
Once again, please restate your name for the record and your county of residency.
My name is Wanda Colette Clark Russell. I go by Clark, I go by Russell, and I go by Colette. I'm here to make a formal complaint about the foul, F-O-U-L, foul, F-O-W-L-S, in my neighborhood. I sit beside, or I live beside, I live in Clayton County, neighbors with roosters, ducks, and chickens. This is all day, every day. I time them. They crow starting at seven, at four o'clock a.m. They do not end until night falls. They're at my bedroom window. When I go out on my porch, I hear this. When I'm in my den, I hear this. When I'm outside, I hear this. I work every day. Sometimes I want to let my windows up. Not now, of course, too hot. However, this is very disturbing. It's very annoying. They crow, this rooster, seventy-five times in forty minutes. I know, 'cause I timed it. We gotta do something about it. I can't stand it. I can't sleep. It disrupts my sleep because they start, like I said, at four o'clock a.m. I found it hard to make a complaint because these are my neighbors. I complained to them about a crying dog, crying all night, and in the mornings, they resolved that. But why, I felt like, should I go to you about roosters, chickens, and ducks, which get on the side of my fence and brood? I guess that's what you call it, brooding. But now, this rooster had the audacity to get up on a table and crow, and when I looked out, he's facing my bedroom window. I did contact Animal Control. I think, I could be wrong, I think it was Captain Jackson. He did come out. He did sit on my porch. I asked him, can you understand my pain? He said, I can't understand it, but I can hear it. Haven't heard back from anybody to say what's going on. Now, I don't want to be too insensitive because I feel like there has to be a need for anyone to have chickens and ducks and roosters. So I had to think about that. Is it a, you know, a food issue? If it is, can we not have someone, including me, I suppose, to see what the need is? How can we accommodate them? Now, this is just the one beside me, these chickens.
I'm sorry, Ms. Russell, excuse me. Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, ma'am, let me, let me say this. First of all, I guess the issue needs to be whether or not they are compliant with the county ordinance.
Oh, according to this ordinance?
So...
It's contradictory.
Okay, so if we need to look at that, then this board as a whole will take a look at that, but in the interim, get, reach back out to interim chief, register, gentleman right there, speak to him about it, and then they'll come back out and do an assessment, and then they will get with us if we need to look at something different, look at our code or whatever else is involved.
Okay, could I just ask one question before I take a seat, please?
Sure.
Just a question. You don't even have to answer. In the past, whenever a ordinance was changed, they would put signs on the corner, I don't know on how many streets, but the public was somehow notified that a zoning was going to change. I have not seen a zoning sign in a few years about zoning. Now, I know, I've been here a long time, that at one point in time, there were no farm animals allowed anymore. So I can't understand how such a drastic change would...
And that's what we need to look into, so she lives, uh...
I live in Ellwood, right across from Fort Gillum.
Yeah, I don't think that's right.
Adjacent to Fort Gillum.
All right, we'll check into it, ma'am. Please touch bases with interim chief register, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
This concludes public comment. The board will now consider the request of Deborah Brewer, Director of Central Services.
Please take them together unless a board member prefer one to be taken separately.
Thank you. Good evening, Central Services. Have several requests, including annual contracts. The first is recommendation to amend the Soul Source CAT Dispatch Software Upgrade Contract with Sun Got Public Sector located in High Point, North Carolina. Funding is available through the E-911 Communications 2015 Fund. The next is recommendation for the purchase and installation of playground in Grant Road Park, of a, of a playground at Grant Road Park utilizing U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract Number 110179 in the amount of $40,000 with Game Time CO. Dominica Recreation Products in Longwood, Florida. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Community Development Block Grant Funds. The third is a recommendation for the purchase and installation of an outdoor fitness playground for the Rex Park Walking Trail utilizing U.S. Communities Cooperative Contract 110179 in the amount of $48,879.05 with Game Time CO. Dominica Recreation Products Incorporated in Longwood, Florida. Funding is available through the Parks and Recreation Community Development Block Grant Funds. The fourth is a recommendation for amendment of asbestos abatement removal and disposal for the Clayton County Senior Services Kinship Care Resource Center in the amount of $1,900 to replace carpet with C.J. Hearn Construction Company located in Atlanta, Georgia. Funding is available through the Senior Services General Funds. The fifth is recommendation for the purchase of active directory support services utilizing statewide contract with Dell Computer Incorporated for the Information Technology Department in the amount of $5,000 using statewide contract SWC 90813-01 with Dell Computer located in Round Rock, Texas. The sixth is recommendation for Soul Source Award for the purchase of a subscription for consolidated lead evaluation and reporting, Clear Law Enforcement Plus for the Clayton County Police Department in the amount of $15,177.60 with Thomas Rutter's, a Division of West Publishing Corporation located in Redmond, Washington. Funding is available through the Police Department General Funds. For annual contracts, RFB 14-04, Clayton County, Georgia, for the Department of Transportation Development Landfill Earth and Material Services Contract, it's a multiple award with Stephen Industries LP located in College Park, Georgia, and TAG Grinding Services Incorporated located in Dadeville, Alabama, with a renewal period from August 25th, 2015 through August 24th, 2016. The next is RFB 1424, which is officiating services for Clayton County Parks and Recreation Athletic Programs, annual contract with Peach State Umpires Association LLC located in Jonesboro, Georgia. It is to amend the current contract to include basketball officiating services. RFB 1440, Clayton County Alarm and Sprinkler Systems Inspections and Services, annual contract with VSC Fire and Security Incorporated located in Norcross, Georgia, with a renewal period from October 13th, 2015 through October 12th, 2016. RFB 13-06, Alcohol and Drug Treatment Services for the Clayton County Adult Felony Drug Court, annual contract with Associated Counseling Incorporated located in Jonesboro, Georgia. The renewal period is from August 7th, 2015 through August 6th, 2016. The request is for you to approve the recommendations and authorize the chairman or his designated to execute all necessary documents to accomplish the intent of the contracts and authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget accordingly.
All right, is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second, any questions on any other items?
I have a very easy question for, for Mr. Lavender, I think. What is active directory?
So essentially what active directory is, it's a large special purpose database that when you log in your county computer or try to access any of the county systems, it handles that transaction and regulates your access based on your security level. So it's protecting...
So that's not just a contact management, that's a whole file server?
It's, it's the whole server that manages those, accessing all of those data sets and all of the different programs throughout...
Okay, I understand. Thank you very much. No further questions.
Any other questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Ramona Bivens, Chief Financial Officer.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have one item for your consideration this evening. It's a request for a refund in the amount of $50 payable to Shannon Turner doing business as another Journey Personal Care Home on Taylor Road in Riverdale, Georgia, for the purpose of refunding the business license fees paid by Ms. Turner to the Community Development Department. The applicant was not approved to receive a business license based on denial by the Planning and Zoning Division of the Community Development Department.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably move in second, any questions? Hearing none, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's unanimous. Thank you.
The board will now consider the request of Kristi Barnes, Chief Staff Attorney.
Please take them together unless a board member prefers one singled out.
Mr. Chairman, can we take 2015-195 regarding Marta separately?
All right, item 14, Resolution 2015-195, take that separate.
Good evening. First is Resolution Number 2015-189, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to approve additional grant funds for the provision of kinship care services as described in the fiscal year 2015, promoting safe and stable families proposal. To authorize the chairman to execute all documents and otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense, and to transfer any required match of local funds, all as may be required under the terms of the agreement, to provide an effective date of this agreement and for other purposes. And this has been updated to reflect the county receiving federal grant funds in the amount of $13,496.08 with a local match of $4,498.69 required. Resolution Number 2015-190 is a resolution to approve an amended memorandum of understanding to allow Commissioner Sana Singleton Gregory to partner with Youth Science Academy and American Community Trust to host a job fair, back-to-school, and community outreach event at the Carl Rodenizer Recreation Center. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of the resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes, this event will be August 8th, 2015, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Resolution Number 2015-191 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County, on behalf of Clayton County Juvenile Court, to enter into an affiliation agreement and contract for services with the Georgia Court Appointed Special Advocate Association to accept grant funds and to set forth the terms and conditions under which the grant funds will be utilized. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and contract for services and otherwise to perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. And these are grant funds in the amount of $41,327.24 with no matching county funds required. Resolution Number 2015-192 is a resolution of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners consenting to a deannexation request from the City of Riverdale to deannex certain property currently located within the city limits of the City of Riverdale at 1183 King Road. To authorize the chairman to perform any acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-193 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a service agreement with Grace Harbor Incorporated on behalf of Clayton County Juvenile Court, providing for the terms and conditions under which certain juvenile court services will be rendered to enhance court services for high-risk youth. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Similarly, Resolution Number 2015-194 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a service agreement with Southwest Key Programs Incorporated on behalf of Clayton County Juvenile Court, providing for the terms and conditions under which certain juvenile court program services will be rendered to enhance court services for at risk, at risk, for high-risk youth. To authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to perform all other acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget where necessary to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes. Resolution Number 2015-196 is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to amend its contract with Construction Management, Construction Management Engineering Services Incorporated, providing for the terms and conditions under which services pertaining to the reconstruction of portions of Panola Road will be rendered. To authorize the chairman to execute the contract and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution. To authorize the chief financial officer to amend the budget as needed to reflect an appropriate revenue source and expense. To provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the resolutions as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions on any of the items?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Mr. Abbotson.
Or two, and this, this might be for Mr. John Johnson in the back row. Kristi, you can answer, but it has to do with 193 and 194, the $375,000 for each of the juvenile court contractors. Was this bid out at all?
It's my understanding that Central Services began the process of bidding this out, but we weren't able to complete that process.
So I'm looking at these, and I read them both. So this first one, for example, Grace Harbor, as I read it for $375,000, and the intent is, is noble, and I don't have any criticism, but they're gonna, it says, "The program shall be divided into twenty-five classes for approximately one to two hours each for small groups of eight to twelve kids." So assuming that they're all two hours, and I take fifty hours and divide it by $375,000, we're at $7,500 per session. The next one is ten sessions for three hours each for a total of thirty hours. That's $12,500 per session for about a two-week period of time, three-week period of time. I'm not saying it's not going to be lucrative for the contractors or it's not beneficial for the kids, but given the scope and the amount of money, the, how come it wasn't, the bid wasn't continued? And if the bidding process wasn't continued, then how do these...
I sent that same request to Ms. Brewer, so perhaps you can answer that question.
That's it, it's a lot of money for, and we've had...
And, and then the contracts allow for twenty percent administrative fee, so about $122,000 for salaries, administrative fee.
...of bidding this out with RFP. However, we revise that in time that what was made, that all of the services had to be fully implemented within thirty, within thirty days of the award, and that did not fit in the time schedule that we had drafted. We had already created the RFP, but because of the grant requirements, as we understand them, that we received a memo from Juvenile and also a copy of the grant that they had to be implemented within thirty days.
So when did that thirty days start?
From July 1st, I think that's when.
And there wasn't any preliminary work? So how did we pick Grace Harbor and those other Southwest Key? How did we pick them if we didn't do a bid? Is this somebody's family or friend or...
The current providers, and they were able to provide continuation of the services without interruption, and I think that...
Mr. Johnson.
So it's a thirty-day class, thirty-hour class. When did they, when did the last program start? Was this a year ago?
We've been using Grace Harbor for six years, and we've been using Southwest Key for the last three years, so this is a continuation. It's not, we didn't want to break service.
No, I understand that, but I'm saying, Mr. Johnson, and, and I'm, I'm just trying to understand it, 'cause it's a lot of money. So Key West, Southwest Key Programs, it's, the program, it says right here, the program is ten three-hour classes for a total of thirty hours. So we've been using them for the last three years. So are we paying them $375,000 per year, and this is a three-year cla, three-week class per year? And they haven't been on-site for a year, or are they getting a $375,000 grant every month or two? How do, how is the, how is it not being interrupted? It seems like it would only be for a couple of weeks every summer or something like that.
No, it's for incoming...
I'm sorry, could you please state your name for the record?
Ashley Martin. It's for continued services for children who will be coming into the program, so these are kids not yet served. So it's a continuation of, and it's not 375 for, it's 375, that's their half for the annual year. It's not every couple of months they get 375,000. And they are actually performing, Grace Harbor is performing three services, and Southwest Key is doing two services, so that's only one program that you're looking at. The ten weeks is our MST program, and they'll also be performing the seven challenges and...
Is the seven challenges within the scope of this?
It is, it is, and it's a different service, and it's laid out in the grant. I don't know if you have a copy of it.
I just have the service agreement. So you're saying that the $375,000 is not just for the thirty-hour program?
Correct.
Where's the grant documents? Who has those? Do we get those?
I can provide those to you, but they did provide a copy to Central Services, but I think, um...
We did.
You got one?
I think this is one of them.
No, no.
I didn't see a grant.
Yeah, I don't have any grants either. I just have the service agreement. My concern is not that there's anything, that there's anything, well, my concern is it's a lot of money for what seems to be a fairly small program, and maybe that's the wrong perspective. I mean, it truly is, I don't know, but I don't have anything documented on. So I'm thinking, how are we giving them $12,000 for a thirty-hour session?
No, that's not the only service that they're performing. That's just one service.
That's the one service that's outlined in the service agreement. So what this, what's before us tonight says, we're going to give them $375,000, and they're going to administer a program with, what, a twenty... twenty percent administrative fee. The program's gonna be up to three hours each for..."
Thirty percent, I don't mean to interrupt you, but there's a thirty percent cap for administrative fees.
Oh, thirty percent, that's even higher for salaries.
It's even higher, but...
It's not a salary, it's their administrative fees for paperwork billing, pay...
Right, it's just not for the services of the children. I think that's what his point was.
All right, well, those are my, I'm not trying to... Those are my concerns. If there are other programs that this is going to, if you could show me where they are, or maybe this is the wrong document that's before us, so we don't have all of the information?
Juvenile Court provided the copy of the RFP and the grant along with, the application along with the services agreement. I didn't write the service agreement, so I'm not sure what they provided.
I'll say, Commissioner Edmondson, I did reach out to Ms. Brewer, and I did reach out to Mr. Johnson about this, why there wasn't a, why wasn't it bid it, and I was advised that because of the short window, and that they had done the process, they initiated the process back in November, I believe, and there was a gap in, in service when we had Mr. Cohelis in place, that there was not someone doing the work to get the RFP off the ground. So there was a error on our end. They're not gonna say that, but that's what happened.
Okay, fair enough. Is everybody comfortable with what's being brought before us?
I'm not, but because we dropped the ball, it's our fault for not continuing with the process.
Okay, so one last question, Ms. Martin, and I appreciate you putting up with me. So how many kids for this three hundred and seventy-five thousand per contract get served over the course of this grant?
It's a referral base, but I think the cap is at forty kids, thirty-five to forty-eight.
Forty kids, so it's eight to twelve per week for the three times per week. Okay, all right, so almost a thousand dollars a kid for, for intervention. All right, I understand.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. All right, here are no other questions, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I have resolution number two thousand and fifteen dash one ninety-five, which is a resolution authorizing Clayton County to enter into a license agreement with MARTA for the installation and operation of a public bus shelter or bench and associated equipment, to authorize the chairman to execute the agreement and to otherwise perform all acts necessary to accomplish the intent of this resolution, to provide an effective date of this resolution and for other purposes.
Is there a motion? I'll make the motion, is there a second? Is there a second? Well, it fails due to a lack of a second.
Lastly, Mr. Chairman and Board, I have a request for an order for remission in the matter of State of Georgia versus Mark A. Strickland and First Choice Bail Bonds as a surety in the amount of one thousand, six hundred and thirty-six dollars even.
Is there a motion?
Still moved.
Is there a second? Probably moving a second. Those in favor, aye. Oppose. It's unanimous, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I need an executive session for real estate and litigation.
Item number sixteen is an appointment to the Board of, Board of Appeals to fill the expiring term of Dr. William Hill. The term is for three years, expiring on August nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Chairman? Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Mr. Dr. William Hill.
Second.
Probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Item number seventeen is an appointment to the Department of Behavior, Health, and Development of Disabilities, Region Three Advisory Council, to fill a vacant seat. The term is for three years, expiring on January thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen. This is a full-board appointment. Are there any nominations? Hearing none. Item number eighteen is an appointment to the Solid Waste Management Authority. This is to fill the expiring term of Rodney Givens. The term is for four years, expiring on August twentieth, two thousand, two thousand and nineteen. Are there any nominations?
I'll make the motion to reappoint Mr. Givens. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails. Is there any other nominations? Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go to the next.
Okay, items nineteen and twenty are both appointments to the Zoning Advisory Group. The first is to fill the expiring term of Jacqueline Peoples. Both are three-year terms, expiring on August nineteenth, two thousand and eighteen. Are there any nominations for Ms. Peoples' seat?
Mr. Chairman, I move to appoint Ray James to the Zoning Advisory Group.
Is there a second? Probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, it's unanimous.
And the second one is for the expiring term of Casey Watts.
Mr. Chairman, I move to reappoint Mr. Watts to serve on the zoning advisory group.
I'll second it.
Probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, this does conclude the agenda for tonight. We did have a request to go into executive session on real estate and litigation.
Miss, no, no, it's not. Madam Chair, Mr. Chairman, point of privilege, since we didn't have a person for the Solid Waste Management Authority, and we do need to have a quorum, I'm going to ask the Board to reconsider the appointment of Rodney Givens.
All right, it's a motion to reconsider the appointment of Mr. Robin, Rodney Givens. Make the motion again to reappoint, is there a second?
Second.
Probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye, oppose.
Aye.
That's three, two, it fails. Madam Clerk, was that, does that conclude?
That does conclude the agenda. We did have a request to go into executive session on a real estate matter and litigation.
All right, is there a motion going to executive session?
Going to executive session, I still move.
I'll second it, probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
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 Oppose, it's unanimous, thank you. Okay, is there a motion to reconvene?
Second.
Probably move him second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose, it's unanimous. Ms. Hancock.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, you have been provided with a copy of a letter of intent from Prime Healthcare Foundation directed to James G. Adams, Chairman of the Board of the Southern Regional Health System, Reverend Ed Best, Chairman of the Hospital Authority of Clayton County, and you, Mr. Chairman, as Chairman of the Board of Commissioners, proposing a plan by which Prime would acquire the assets owned by the county located at Southern Regional Medical Center and would take over and acquire the, the right to operate that center going forward. The operative portions with regard to the county of that agreement call for this board to convey by way of the hospital, or convey the property back to the hospital authority, and the hospital authority to convey to Prime the, the real property and the fixtures that are located there. The other items would be conveyed by other entities who own those. In exchange for your conveyance of that real property, Prime is agreeing that they will operate this facility as an acute care hospital for a minimum of five years, that they will, within that five-year period of time, invest fifty million dollars of capital improvements into the property. There are a number of other items that are referred to in this with regard to the retention of employees, with regard to the retention of physicians, with regard to the development of business, but specifically to the extent that it affects you as a board, that those are the operative things that you would be agreeing to. As has been pointed out, it is just a letter of intent, it is not a binding agreement, but it is done at this point in order to allow all the parties to move towards the completion of a, what would ultimately be a binding proposal or a binding purchase agreement, and we would present this to you for your, for your consideration. There are representatives of Prime with us tonight, and, and they have said that they'd be glad to answer any of your questions, tell you about their operation, and, and handle it however you would like to. And I don't know who's, who, who is going to start, but I think Troy Schell is their general counsel, and I'll just turn it over to him. Jim Somerset is their regional CEO, he's also here. Just turn it over to him and allow them to go forward.
Thank you, Jim.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Please state your full name.
I will. My name is Troy Schell, S-C-H-E-L-L, General Counsel for Prime Healthcare Foundation. Thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to come back to Clayton County tonight to talk about Prime Healthcare Foundation and the potential acquisition of Southern Regional Health System. In that we're a California company, I thought it might be prudent, prudence to provide a little background as to who we are. The Prime Healthcare Foundation is a 501(c)(3) public charity. It owns seven hospitals in two states, has eight hundred million dollars in assets relatively debt-free. The debt is under fifty million dollars. The foundation has been donated primarily by Prime Healthcare Services, which is an affiliate organization, which owns twenty-seven hospitals over eleven states. It's been operating since two thousand and one. Together, the foundation and Prime Healthcare Services is in the business of saving hospitals. That is what we do. We have a mission to save hospitals, save jobs, save lives. We don't go into communities where a hospital is flourishing. Frankly, those are the hospitals that keep operating. Hospitals such as Southern Regional, when there is a real need in the community for this hospital, the hospital is an absolute mandatory asset in this community. We save these hospitals. We buy hospitals out of bankruptcy, we've done it five times previously. We buy hospitals on the verge of bankruptcy, and coming from California, that is what my history is. We've seen the hospital deserts in the greater Los Angeles community. We own a hospital in Inglewood, California called Centinella, prettiest hospital in town. It's the old Olympic Hospital, but Daniel Freeman, two miles away, closed down, MLK closed down, King Drew closed down. You literally, we call it the ER Sahara Desert. There's no ERs available, and what does that do? That affects the community. That affects accessibility to healthcare. Those are the things that we strive our best not to allow happen. And so when we buy community, buy hospitals in various communities, we look, is there a need for us? Is there a need for our model? Does this hospital need to be maintained? Because what our focus is, the community needs that hospital, we want to maintain it, we want to grow it. In thirty-four acquisitions, I've been general counsel for, for three years in the, with us for six, there's three things we've never done when we've acquired a hospital. We've never sold one, we've never closed one, and we've never closed, shut down the service line. I want to make sure that's an important point to knowing, we don't believe saving hospitals by cutting, we believe saving hospitals by growing. And how do we do that? It's like real estate, location, location, location. For us, it's quality, quality, quality. Everything is premised on quality. The founder of our company, Prim Ready, is a cardiologist by training, was a cardiologist for twenty years. It's a physician-driven model, and we focus on quality. We focus on the metrics that matter. From the time that the patient comes into the ER, what does a patient not want to do? Sit in the ER, wants to get triaged, wants to have the ER doctor look at him or her in a decision, admit, discharge, or transfer, or go home, hopefully the latter. And we, and that's how we start. Then we go up into the floors and we do the same thing. And we do that because frankly, hospital business, you know, nobody likes to say it, is a consumer-based business. We don't want the hospital to be the hospital of necessity, we want the hospital to be the hospital of choice, because by that means you're gonna get more business. And the hospital of choice are the ones that attract physicians, the ones that attract nurses, the ones that attract everybody going, no, Southern Regional, that's my hospital. It's not because I have to go there, I want to go there. So how has quality worked for us? There's probably not a system in the country that has received more quality accolades than us. Top-ten system by Truven Analytics in two thousand and nine, top-fifteen in two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, top-one-hundred hospital thirty-three separate times at various hospitals. These are the things that we're proud of. These are the things that matter to us. And in doing so, by starting on quality, then we can fo, focus on physician recruitment, and how do we do that? We invest. We invest in technology, we invest in capital. Since two thousand and five, we've spent nearly a billion dollars on capital expenditures, whether it's going into a hospital and renovating the emergency room, whether it's putting a sixty-four slice CT scanner in, whether it's a new MR machine. We've had some hospitals where they had such little money, they didn't even have light bulbs in. They had like every third one, so we come into a complete overhaul, because hospital has to be, has to look like a place you want to go. So we spend the money, and we also give back. We have spent two-point-seven billion dollars in charity care since, and uncompensated care since two thousand and ten. We, any hospital we've acquired, whether it's a Catholic hospital, which we've done, we maintain all existing charity care policies, and we've donated millions back to nursing schools, we've donated forty million to build a new medical school in California, and we also continue to educate the new physicians. We have five residency programs throughout the country. We believe that there's a, there's a short, and we don't believe, we know, there's a shortage of family medic, medicine practitioners in various communities. I'm assuming it's gonna be very similar to this area as well. So we want to work with the local communities, the local colleges, to continue that medical education, and if it makes sense here, we'll do what we've done elsewhere. So that's, that's who we are, and let me tell you how we got here. We received a call from, from the banker of Southern Regional that the, a hospital was in trouble. We had no visions of coming to Georgia, but as I, as I, as my, my president said last week, if you're going to talk the talk, you better do the walk. And so we came down here, we saw a need, we saw a beautiful hospital, we saw a community that deserves this hospital, and so we decided we're gonna make the commitment to keep this hospital open. As outlined in our letter of intent, what we're willing to do here is keep this hospital open for a period of five years, and with, as I said earlier, even though we don't, we've never shut or closed a hospital, but that's the term, fifty million dollars in capital expenditures, maintain existing charity policies at, or even better, depending on what the policies are, hire substantially all the employees, keep them at same levels with similar benefits. So we're willing to commit to this community, we're willing to commit to this hospital, and so that's who Prime Healthcare is. Along with me is Jim Somerset, he's our regional chief executive officer. He can speak to any operational questions you might have, but if you have any questions, I'm, I'm more than happy to answer them, and Commissioners, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for Mr. Schell?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. And maybe this is a Jim question, I don't know, I'm Commissioner Edmondson. Without giving away any trade secrets, if that's what it's called, help me understand, I'm not in the hospital management business, the county's not in the hospital management business, but the evolution, the hospital's been around a long time, we've had local management, there's been outside consultants, we've over the last few years had Emory managing it. Can you all share with us how you do it so successfully, and then what's different about that? Well, if we're gonna get into the secret sauce, we gotta go back into the exact... But basically, and, and Mr. Somerset can co, can comment is, is we really focus, the quality actually leads to a lot of, lot of intangible benefits and actually tangible benefits. So not everybody focuses that heavily on quality, and so by focusing on quality, and we also focus on the emergency room, we believe that that's a very good way to start, meaning getting patients in and out, not going on diversion, because if you go on diversion, what happens? Those patients go elsewhere, and those are opportunities lost. So by able to get in the ambulances in, getting them out, our ambulance wait time is, I believe, under, you know, ten, ten, fifteen minutes to get them out. We've heard horror stories, you know, in communities we've gone to where, you know, these guys are sitting there, and they're not able to treat people that need to be treated. It's, it, so that's, so that's, that's one aspect of it. There's a lot more other complicated things that Jim's definitely smarter than I am and can comment on it, but that is, that is really the main focus.
Somerset, do you have anything to add to that?
Commissioners, thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening.
I'm sorry, could you please state your name again for the record?
James Somerset, S-U-M-M-E-R-S-E-T-T. I guess the simplest way to answer your question, Commissioner Edmondson, is that it's, it's passion. I mean, and it really begins with the founder of our company, Dr. Ready. I mean, this is a unique company in that we are not owned by a group of investors. So the, the purpose of the company is not to return a financial, return to people who have invested money into the company. I mean, the company... I mean, the company really is about the mission that, uh, Mr. Schell shared and that's saving hospitals. And that's been Dr. Ready's passion since he founded the company over twenty years ago and that's still what we do. Um, that passion translates to a, a focus on the very small things of running hospitals. And with the small things, when you pay attention to the detail, uh, they build up to make a very good product. Uh, you, you can't have a good product if, if you don't pay attention to those details. So paying attention to the details, we spend a lot of time in the facility. I mean, as you can tell, our commitment is we're already here and we're only even talking about a letter of intent. Um, if things go well this evening, I'll be here for the next couple of days, uh, spending time over at Southern Regional, learning more about the hospital. I can't tell you the particular issues that you have right now. I mean, again, from our impression, uh, in, in touring the facility, you've got a great facility. Uh, there is a very definite need, uh, here in the community for, uh, Southern Regional Medical Center to be here and to be healthy. And, uh, Prime is the company who can assure that that will happen. Uh, I, I will do my best over the next couple of days to inform the staff about Prime, you know, what we do, how we do it. Uh, but also to maybe bring a sense of security to them. Um, I'm sure anytime you're going through these types of financial difficulties, there are, um, insecurities that leads you maybe to look elsewhere and, you know, you may have an outmigration of staff, uh, may have patients who are hesitant to come there. Uh, but we will try to calm the waters, if you will, for, uh, for the next several months until we can get the transaction completed. In, in order to make a hospital successful, it has to begin with the quality, uh, as, as Troy shared. Uh, we also have a focus on, uh, the revenue side, so it's not just about coming in and cutting expenses, which a lot of companies will do. Uh, we have really made a science out of understanding how documentation translates to coding, how coding translates to reimbursement. You know, quite simply, we want to get paid for the work that we do. And we spend a lot of time focused on that. And because of the excellent documentation that our doctors are able to bring, uh, the, the fact that we will have a chief medical officer who will pay attention every day to the patients who are admitted and discharged from that hospital and be very involved as a key member of the management team, uh, that will help improve that quality, that helps, um, improve the financial condition of the hospital. So we, none of our hospitals lose money. Um, they all make a positive contribution, but the, the main purpose is not out there to make a fifteen or twenty percent return to give to somebody else. It's to make that money to reinvest into the company and into your hospital. And that's why we're able to make the financial commitment, uh, that we have.
Okay. Thank you for that response.
I have one question. Mr. Schell, did I, did I say that correctly? Um, you mentioned the investment in the physicians in the area. I wanted to ensure that we meant Clayton County specifically and not just the surrounding counties. So we're talking about physicians wanting to be in the county, particularly near and around the hospital.
That is our intent and hope.
Okay.
And our commitment.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Schell, and, or Mr. Somerset. You all have mentioned in several of my readings regarding, um, recruiting physicians. And in your statement earlier, you mentioned hiring, you know, your own employees. Now, does that mean that you all are going to keep some of the employees, that they are ready, or you will have a layoff?
Oh, I, I, what I said was we would retain the employees, substantially all the employees, um, which could be a hundred percent, could be, you know, a little less, but our intent is to keep the, is to keep the employees.
Okay. I, I just didn't read that anywhere. I read about the, the physicians and all, but I didn't read about the other employees. Okay.
Yeah, the physician component was only if, uh, there's a need for increased, uh, primary care physicians, increased, uh, specialists, is to bring them down here, um, because that's what the community needs and deserves.
Okay.
Any other questions from Board members?
I might, might add one thing to that real quickly. Um, it, it's not unusual when we go into a new medical center, and again, we have not done an assessment here, uh, that there could be a small reduction in staffing. May, maybe not at this medical center because our impression when we walked through, it was very busy. And so your, your staffing is determined by how busy the hospital is. But invariably, but what happens, no matter what our starting point is, if you look at the hospital a year from now or two years from now, the employment will be greater than it is today. So our objective is to build the employment because that's really what drives the health of your county
Mm-huh.
and your community.
Absolutely. And just so that you know, and I'm sure that you do, a lot of our citizens work at the hospital. So our interest is to make sure our citizens continue to work at the hospital.
We got a real sense that it is indeed a community hospital.
Absolutely.
And, uh, that's what, uh, it will be under Prime Healthcare. Still be your hospital.
Did I hear somewhere that the wait time in the emergency room would be cut back to a few hours or something? Did I hear that somewhere or did I read that?
I, I think Mr. Schell said that. That, that is what we do. We, one of the things that makes our company successful is when we bring the patients in, we have an immediate assessment done of the patient. Uh, the goal is within two hours that they're either discharged from the emergency room or admitted to the patient floor.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? All right, I just want to make a quick statement and that is, I appreciate your interest and your commitment to coming to Clayton County, looking at the hospital and, and hopes of, uh, purchasing. We look forward to hopefully moving this forward, so. With that being said, no other questions to be asked. Is there a motion?
Would Chairman like to make a motion that this board consider a option of the LOA as presented to us?
I'll second that.
And authorizing the chairman to sign it?
I will second that. Oh.
You got something to?
Well, um, the addition that, uh, Commissioner Rooks mentioned, because in the agreement it has Clayton County area, regional area or something.
He addressed that.
I know, but it's not in...
Yeah, but this isn't the binding, this is just the LOI. It's not the binding final.
Yes, no, but...
Okay, just want to make sure that correction.
But he's made a commitment. I just want to let y'all know this is recorded, so if we need to, if we need to replay it back to you, just let us know. We don't have a problem doing it. All right, there's a motion and a second. Any other questions? All right, hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I think we need to thank, um, Chief Murkison, Chief Financial Officer, Bivens, and of course, Mr. Hancock.
Absolutely. They did a tremendous job.
Absolutely.
Give you a round of applause. And I know it's been a lot of hours going into this and, uh, a lot of praying. And we're still not there yet, but we are a whole lot closer than we were. So thank you for your hard work. All right, is there any other business before the board, Madam Clerk?
No, sir.
That's all. All right, well then I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Probably move him second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Oppose. It's unanimous. Have a great day.